You can vote whether you were here or not.
Good evening and welcome to the Eden Prairie Planning Commission. This is Monday, October 26, 2015. Please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, please be seated. So, the first item on the agenda tonight is in fact the approval of the agenda. Are there any modifications or changes to the agenda? If not...
I'll move to accept the agenda.
Second? Motion and a second, all in favor of accepting the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Our next item is the approval of the minutes, and this would be the minutes from the Planning Commission meeting held on Monday, September 28, 2015. Do any commissioners have any changes or modifications to the minutes?
I just have one minor item on page two at the top, the first paragraph that starts with David Miller. I know demo is something we all understand, but I thought the minutes ought to maybe say demolish.
Julie, you got that? Other Julie? Any other changes to the minutes? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve the minutes as amended.
Second? We have a motion and a second, all in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. All right, we have no, I'm sorry, we have a one public hearing tonight, which is a code amendment relating to the subdivision regulations. And I believe Julie, you will present that to the commission.
Mr. Chair members of the commission, as introduced, staff has prepared some revisions to the subdivision regulations. The subdivision regulations are Chapter 12 of the city code, and they outline the policies, procedures, requirements for subdivision of property within the city of Eden Prairie. So, it recently came to staff's attention that the subdivision regulations do not adequately address the combination of property when you're combining two or more parcels into a single parcel. So, for clarity's sake, some additional language was drafted to address that specific issue and clarify what the processes are for an administrative review of subdivisions, as well as a minor subdivision process, which is when it's a fairly simple project, that it can go straight to the city council for their review rather than going through the Planning Commission as well. So, there's been some additional clarity with regard to those processes and procedures, as well as submittal requirements. And as long as staff was working in the subdivision chapter, we took a look at some other areas that maybe haven't necessarily been as reflective of practice, or any grammatical or housekeeping type of errors that needed to be fixed. So, there are a handful of other housekeeping items in the subdivision chapter as well. And my staff is recommending approval of the subdivision regulation amendments, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that the commission might have.
Thank you. Why don't we start off if there are any questions from the commission? Anybody have a question they would like to ask?
I got a couple of questions.
Go for it Travis.
What do the staff project that this combination in the ordinance will affect? How many properties will that affect?
Mr. Chair members of the commission, we haven't really taken a look at, you know, it's hard for staff to project how many property owners may want to, may own side by side two or three parcels and eventually want to combine them into a single parcel. It's hard for us to project that. But, the language that was in code only defined subdivision as the true subdivision of property, not the combination of property. So, the language that's before you this evening really clarifies that and says it doesn't apply only when you're creating more parcels, but also if you're combining into fewer parcels, the subdivision regulations apply then as well.
Just thinking back, Julie, if memory serves me right, it's one a year, one every other year kind of thing is, I don't know, that's my memory of it. Not often, but not completely unusual either.
Mr. Chair members of the commission, as you stated, it is not a frequent request to combine multiple parcels into a single parcel. But, in addition to clarifying that combination procedure, it also, the draft language before you also takes into account identifying the criteria by which an administrative subdivision is plausible, and when it is a minor subdivision requiring council review. That additional detail is something that staff had practiced as a matter of course, but it wasn't necessarily reflected step by step in the code. So, we've worked to provide that in the code language so that property owners coming forward understand what the expectations and the process are, and that helped to do that education up front, and nobody surprised further on in the process.
Okay, Travis, additional questions?
Yeah, if a difference between administrative approval on a subdivision or a conjoining of properties versus the minor subdivision, and I'm assuming the minor conjoining as well would be applicable in that, what are the criteria that would step it specifically into? I know that we've got it in front of us, but for the sake of those that are in the audience, the member in the audience and those listening on television, what would be the differences between those two criteria?
Mr. Chair members of the commission, a minor subdivision or one that would require city council review would include if there was any need for additional right-of-way that needs to be provided as a part of the plat, they'd have to go through the minor subdivision process. If there are wetland buffers, trails, things of that sort, it may trigger a minor subdivision rather than a straight administrative subdivision review process. It's very limited as to when you could do an administrative review process. You could create no more than two lots or combination down into only one lot. So, it's a very narrow scope, if you will, that allows that administrative review.
Where does straight zoning come into play within these two? If some, if a project proponent had a property that they wanted to subdivide and it's subdivided into everything that fell within the guidelines of the ordinances per straight zoning, or combined, and it would fall within the zoning characteristic of that neighborhood or that area, where does that fall into play with the two new, these new criterias?
Mr. Chair members of the commission, the criteria that are outlined for the administrative review, as I said, the division has to result in no more than two parcels. If it's a division, if it's a combination, it can result in no more than one. So, in that case, you'd have to, you'd be able to go through an administrative review. In the case of a minor subdivision, one that requires city council review, those have to be small in size and of minor importance as determined by staff. So, if you've got a piece of property, and I want to make sure I'm understanding exactly what your question is, if you've got a piece of property that's, I don't know, 10 or 15 acres in size, the zoning already exists on site, all the lots are coming in that are proposed, meeting lot size, dimensions, width, frontage, all of the requirements that the city code lays out, that would require you to go through a full subdivision process because on a property 10 to 15 acres in size, presumably you're creating more than just a handful of lots, and that would go through the full subdivision process. Now, if I haven't answered your question, please let me know, and I'll give it another run.
Well, it kind of brings to mind what you brought up, the one frequency per year, and it's probably about right. The last time I think we remember seeing something that would be applicable in this situation was Sky Lane. I think that was two years ago, maybe it was three years ago, when they came in and they had a larger plat, they wanted to divide it in two. And those were larger lots to begin with, and within the zoning of what could have been done. I guess I can't remember halfhand whether or not that would have been applicable for an administrative approval or a minor subdivision, which was just went straight to the council. I'm just trying to see the applicability and the time value and the cost to both the city and the public in reviewing the information and then putting forth their comments, as well as the project proponents, to see what falls into what category and how we can maybe streamline it even further if that's applicable.
Mr. Chair members of the commission, right now, the subdivision ordinance does allow for minor subdivisions. Again, minor are the ones that can go straight to the city council. But, the language in the code today really only says that you can go through a minor subdivision process and proceed straight to council. It does not identify what that process is or what additional conditions can be captured through that council review process. It's not very clear if I were a resident of Eden Prairie looking to go through the minor subdivision process, and there's just that kind of blanket statement that says, sure, you can go straight to council, but it doesn't outline what I need to submit, what I would need to expect in terms of a timeline or process. The amendment this evening identifies some further detail in order to help not only educate the public, but also set expectations for current staff, future staff, future policymakers, as well as to understand what that process is.
Maybe I, let me add a question in here. I think the wording in the new ordinance was, said something about just a resolution at the council meeting. So, does that imply not really a formal public hearing, but more of just a resolution?
Mr. Chair members of the commission, if I speak out of turn, I'm confident that Rod will help me out here. Historically, I believe minor subdivisions have proceeded to the city council similar to a final plat, and those do go straight to city council without a public hearing and are considered solely, I shouldn't say solely, but under a resolution, and do not necessitate a public hearing.
So, in a sense, the minor subdivision differentiation is whether it gets a public hearing or not?
Mr. Chair members of the commission, the minor subdivision language that we have before you right now, to the best of my recollection, does not, and I'm just trying to read and talk here at the same time, does not require a public hearing, rather it says that it has to go to the city council.
That's what I was, and that would be saving of time and energy and for everybody.
Correct.
As it's deemed a minor.
Yes.
That would be the differentiation, I guess.
In item C, it says, "The city council shall consider the request for a minor subdivision, and the approval shall be in the form of a resolution." So, that identifies that streamlined process.
Okay.
So, stepping, taking that one step further, the administrative approval has four criteria for which there are A, B, C, D, and E subdivisions, with a N subdivision. One of them is owners of land contiguous to parcels being divided or combined file no written objection within 10 days. What is the process if there is an objection for adjacent, and I'm assuming that's immediately adjacent properties to the subject property? Or are we, is the city still going out their specific distance from its center and then sending out a blanket mail system?
Well, the way it's written, it's the adjacent property owners, and we would probably assume people across the street as well if there was, it'd be perimeter properties. But, in the case of, if it can't be done administratively, and generally if it's a combination, we would have to vacate easements, and that would be a public hearing to vacate the easements. If you were going to create two lots, more than likely, you're going to need easements as well. So, I think the administrative approval is going to be probably, not going to happen very often, just because if there's any easements either vacated or created, there's, it needs to go to another, you know, another hearing to vacate them or create them. Because the minor subdivision is actually going to be a plat. It's just that it's not, if it's not controversial, it doesn't need to have a public hearing.
If it's not controversial, there are no changes, there's nothing that would trigger a public hearing, and the perimeter neighbors have all been notified and have not said anything, that would be, then it would be able to go through the administrative side of things.
Yes. If it's kind of straightforward situation, I mean, we've done, in the past, we've done a lot of combinations and so forth for tax purposes. If people want to have one tax statement instead of, they have two properties, but they want to have one tax statement, that's a fairly, probably more frequent thing that happens. But, they keep the two lots still legal, legally as Lot 1, Block 1, and Lot 2, Block 1, or whatever.
So, this would almost be kind of like in land speak that straight zoning I was talking about, there's nothing that is outside of the ordinances or the codes right now specifically that would negate a public hearing, like variances or right-of-way easements, either adding or subtracting, or any other contentious application.
Right. Well, under the minor subdivision, at the end, it basically, one of the last things it says is if it's not approved under this criteria, the applicant may apply for approval through the council, through the regular process. So, if there's anything that comes up and is anything that's deemed to be, you know, something that we want some public input on, whether it's by letter or just we know about something, then it would, we'd automatically go to the normal process.
Is this applicable for government-owned real property? Like, can a governmental entity, say the county or the city, that have two parcels that just happen to be right next to each other, are they just going to be able to use this? Or will that still require or trigger a public hearing process since it is a government-owned properties?
Mr. Chair members of the commission, the way the language is drafted, there's nothing in the language that talks about ownership impacting what process would be available. So, for instance, if the city of Eden Prairie owned two pieces of property, and the city wanted to combine them for whatever purposes, I don't know, maybe it's in a park, and they're two separate parcels, and they wanted to combine them, if they met, if the properties met the criteria for the administrative subdivision approval, they could go through that administrative process. If not, then we could, you know, work our way down the list, look to the minor subdivision process, and see if it meets those criteria as well to utilize that mechanism in order to combine those properties. If not, then we move down to the full subdivision process that may, you know, if there are easements that need to be put in place, or maybe there's right-of-way that needs to be dedicated for a road from one of those properties. The language in the code does not speak to different processes for different property ownership.
I think you guys probably know where I'm going with this. I'm a little hesitant on allowing, I mean, I can understand private sectors, but, you know, separating out the public sector. And I'm curious to see if there are state statutes, or if there are council directives that would disallow a governmental entity to do an administrative approval on these types of scenarios for the sake of public input and information, you know, the public dissemination of information.
Well, I can tell you that on several occasions, if MINDOT or the county is, or the city is slopping land for whatever purpose, for example, if they turn a road back to us, jurisdictionally turn a road back to us, and there, it's on their right-of-way and they give it to us, that's generally a process that goes through the council as a resolution, but there's no public hearing associated with that. It's just a formality on the legal ownership of that piece of land. Could happen with combinations and so forth. But, usually, the public right-of-way is defined as well. And MINDOT actually contacted us the other day, they want to do a number of road corridors that are still under their right-of-way, that have been maintained by us for years, but they want to begin the process to kind of turn those back to us. So, that would be the situation where in that case, it would be a resolution, it would be a legal description, it would be an exhibit, and that just goes to the council for approval. But, it would not require a public hearing, because it's owned by the, just owned by different jurisdiction of the government.
I see where you're going with it, and I have a sense that there's a lot of public agency to public agency land transactions that transpire on a regular basis for all the points that you cited there. Whereas, if it was a public to private transaction, or vice versa, I can see how that would automatically trigger our review, or council's review, obviously. And if there was a taking, I think that would trigger some oversight as well. But, in the case of the, what I call benign land trade swaps, or what have you, between various governmental jurisdictions at different levels, county, city, state, for roadway improvements and the like, I can see how this process would be fine to continue. Can you think of a circumstance that, I see where you're going with it?
I just don't want to open up the floodgates.
Yeah, yeah.
Especially with public perception presently.
Right, right.
Not necessarily with our city, but on national scales.
And I think there's, to me, I'm with Ed on this, I don't see a big issue, because I think there still is enough visibility, and it does have to go in front of the council. So, it's not like it's happening without, you know, the council being aware of it, it being published in the council packets, and again, the way this is set up, the perimeter property owners around the perimeter of this would be notified. So, I think, to me, there's a reasonable level of protection where somebody would, could put up a red flag if they wanted to.
If I could jump onto that same comment, I think the issue at hand here is transparency and making sure that our city has the appropriate transparency in its land transactions that are common for any city within the state. We don't want to hide anything, and I don't think that's anybody's intention. And so, we just want to make sure that if there's a time-tested process for land transactions like this that apparently are benign, that we're just following those same procedures.
Yeah, it's the balance of transparency, critical, efficiency, love to get more as we can get it without sacrificing the transparency. And I feel comfortable that that's not at risk here, but again, everybody can have their own opinion on this certainly.
Well, I've got other questions related to other stuff too. So, if we're done with, if anyone else has any. I noticed that you went from one inch to 100 feet on plans, to one inch equals 50 feet on plans. Is there, and I was trying to find, and maybe I skipped over it when I was reading this information as to electronic format in lieu of drafting up 15 plans, or whatever it is nowadays, the electronic format, that get pretty costly when you start drafting plan after plan after plan with revisions and stuff like that for a homeowner that wants to just do something simple.
Mr. Chair members of the commission, staff has not yet had the software to accommodate online or electronic submissions at this point. It is something that is on our long-term work plan in order to find some type of software that will accommodate not only the planning and engineering divisions, but also the building division, finance, so that there is an opportunity for all impacted divisions to be able to utilize same or similar software in order to, you know, track our time, review our comments, you know, forward those on through the development review process. So, certainly, we do get paper copies in of the applications that are provided. We also get electronic files and, you know, on flash drive, or we get those emailed over, and as necessary, we utilize those when we can. And certainly, nobody is prohibited from submitting those at this point. If, you know, we prefer those, it certainly assists in sending out plans to MINDOT, or the watershed district, or others outside agencies for a review. But, at this point, we don't have the software in place in order to do a complete review online.
But, that will be forthcoming. Anybody?
Go ahead, no.
Further down on the streets aspect, I know that, sorry, I'm nitpicking this a little bit, but we have our chance at this now, so we might as well vet it. The design speed of residential minor streets is 30 miles per hour. Assuming we're not expecting people to drive 30 miles an hour on small residential streets, that stayed the same, there's been no changes from the original language. I just wanted to clarify that.
Yes, I mean, it's, the design speed is more important on the horizontal and vertical curves, so that we don't end up with some unsafe conditions. But, certainly, people generally in neighborhoods, some people will drive over 30 or 30, but a lot of times, people don't in neighborhood situations because of the activities and so forth. But, we can't design, or we can't sign for less than 30 miles an hour on a street.
It's kind of like that safety, there's a safety net there, we're designing for over excessive speed for what people should be driving is basically kind of how it works, so that they've got the sightlines and they've got the safety.
And there are exceptions to that in many situations where we've, we can't make, or the developer can't make 30 miles per hour, and we have to try to, try to get 28, 25 miles per hour designed, or something that's as close to as what you can in a situation that's given. But, with some, with probably more criteria on the vertical, make sure the vertical curves are adequate for stopping sight distance and so forth. But, it's never black and white.
Section 1241 mini parks, we've been discussing at length with the light rail, or the light rail ordinance, or the proposed light rail ordinance. How does this work in conjunction, specifically referencing subdivision 3 and subdivision 4? City required to, is required to dedicate a reasonable portion of the proponents' land to the city for public use as mini park. Are there conflicting messages between this language and what we've, I just want to make sure that we're being consistent here?
Mr. Chair members of the commission, the TOD ordinance does include language that requires a certain amount of open space to be provided as a part of, you know, calculated based on density or gross floor area of a building. In the subdivision regulations, this is what applies only when property is subdivided, or if this were to move through or combined. So, in the instance of the TOD ordinance, I, at a staff level, we expect that the majority of development that will occur on TOD's own property ultimately will be redevelopment of property, because these, very few of the properties within the half-mile of the proposed station areas are vacant and have never been subdivided. So, any language in Chapter 12 only becomes applicable if the property owner is making application to subdivide the property. So, the language that's in the TOD ordinance is applicable based on zoning. So, they would be required to provide open space, and that open space does not need to be owned or dedicated to the city. It could be privately held and maintained by a homeowners' association, or by a private property owner if it were a corporate or business entity that owned the property. So, they're two different animals here.
So, let me see if I get this right. So, the TOD ordinance and the language of this ordinance would not necessarily conflict with each other in that TOD area because of the redevelopment nature. Would there be any, any way that that would be in conflict with one another, where this would be in conflict with the TOD? One, I'm thinking off the top of my head, where you've got multiple, in redevelopment, you've got multiple smaller, like two smaller parcels, and you want to combine it for a larger footprint.
Right.
And so, would that trigger this clause, or is that completely separate within the TOD?
Mr. Chair members of the commission, the Chapter 12 mini parks, or any language that talks about parks in Chapter 12, like I said, would only be triggered when the property is subdivided. So, in the event that we've got a TOD redevelopment property, and they are assembling properties and want to plat them into, I don't know, one big property, or fewer than what they have, the subdivision regulations would apply, and based on the use that is proposed on the site, we'd take a look at what the TOD ordinance requires, if it requires X square footage of open space, or public plaza area, or something of that sort that is required by the TOD ordinance. And then, we'd take a look at that in concert with what the language is in Chapter 12, along with the park dedication payment requirements that are outlined in city code as well, and all of those would kind of work together in concert to establish what And all of those would kind of work together in concert to establish what is the appropriate recreational area or open space or park property provided within that project.
Thank you for clarifying that for me.
Ed, did you say you had?
I, I did.
A question or two?
Just chair. If I could ask clarification on the accuracy of surveys that you expect in the very first page of the subdivision, I think it's subdivision 1, paragraph A, it talks about briefly the application process to the engineering department. And maybe middle of the way through that paragraph, it uses the adjective, "An accurate survey shall be provided." And it goes on to say later of the proposed condition, "Just a survey without the adjective accurate anymore." And so, I'm wondering, is the accurate adjective in there because we expect maybe some resident DIY survey sketches on paper or does the checklist on the form require a survey prepared by a registered land surveyor in the state of Minnesota? And then that registered surveyor would already have his, his professional obligation to provide things with the precision and accuracy of his trade?
Mr. Chair members of the commission, that language, I believe mainly is there because we may have a survey that comes in signed by, as you said, a licensed surveyor, but if it has been photocopied or something of that sort, it may come in at a scale that it's no longer scalable. So, it needs to be accurate so that we at a staff level can take a look at it and confirm the depictions and the measurements that are provided. Quite often, we receive surveys into the building division that have been either photocopied or emailed and then reprinted and that accuracy gets lost in, in cyberspace and so we need copies that are scalable.
Okay. So, there, was there a purposeful omission of the word accurate in the second half of that sentence?
No, sir.
Okay.
No, sir.
So, it's okay the way it is for you?
Yep.
Okay, all right. And then I have a second question with regard to the street intersection radius. There was a substantial change in the street intersection radius from 15 feet to 100 feet. And I want to make sure I understand that right.
About that too, yep.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And it seems to have caught us all by surprise. It seems like a, quite a wide radius potentially required for large vehicles, but can someone educate us on the reasoning behind that?
Yes, I can answer that. Members of the commission, that's, is in regards to the radius as you enter the, the circular part of a cul-de-sac. So, if you want to consider it, it's kind of like our tier, it's our teardrop cul-de-sac rather than, our old standard used to be a 39-foot radius cul-de-sac and then 15-foot reverse curves that would line up. And that doesn't work well for vehicles, particularly emergency vehicles trying to enter, coming around, fire trucks, for example. So, it's, it's, it matches our current standard, which has been in place for 15 years probably.
Thank you, but in the preceding paragraph, I thought it just addressed four-way intersections in the paragraph preceding the cul-de-sac section.
I'm trying to find where you're.
Subdivision 4.
I'm looking at subdivision 4, intersection.
It's on 12.
What page?
1212.
1212?
Subdivision 4.
That's actually a good catch because that's not supposed to be that way. That was not supposed to be changed. The last sentence was supposed to be changed.
Was supposed to be within this cul-de-sac.
Yes. Intersections, I mean, we generally, but more than 15, but 15, we don't want 100. So, that's.
I didn't think so. Okay.
It's generally in a 25 to 30-foot range radiuses.
Okay, good.
Good catch.
Sure. And I don't know if similarly, there's additional language, I didn't cite the paragraph that talks about the easement then at corners and what should happen to the right-of-way. And I believe there was a stipulated radius for a minimum at street intersections where the right-of-way would follow that curve that was cited as the roadway curve.
Is that the 20-foot wide radius you're talking about?
Is that it? Yeah, I don't have a copyright in front of me, but.
Yeah, yeah.
So, I just, those two radiuses have probably come from the same concurrent point of.
Are you referring to the next sentence? So, it's be the second to last sentence on subdivision 4?
The one with the yellow, white, yellow color.
No. Give me a moment, move on.
That three-foot radius, that's, that's something we hadn't addressed. It's been in the code for a long time and what we generally get is more of a wedge out of the corner if we need it. Again, it's kind of based on the design. If you, if you have fairly large radiuses for trucks, you know, or depending on the design, you many times need that wedge in the corner to provide for a boulevard and utilities and so forth.
Okay. I found where I was talking about. It was under your chart, actually on 12-11, subdivision 3, streets as a footnote.
Oh, there it is, yeah.
Right-of-way radius 50 feet.
Yeah, that's for a cul-de-sac.
Okay.
It's the same as, as, you know, well, if you're looking at the.
Okay, that's a continuation of a new footnote number one then.
Yes. So, maximum length of a cul-de-sac is 500 feet. Rate, the right-of-way radius of the bulb of the cul-de-sac is 50 feet. The curb is 39-foot radius.
All right. Thank you, I think that clarifies.
Let me take a deep breath right now from the commissioners and as this is a public hearing, if there is anyone in the audience who would like to speak to this issue, now is the time to come forward. Not seeing anyone wanting to come forward. We can go on and continue. Travis or Ann, do you have any question? Any more additional questions?
His last one, on the cul-de-sac and the.
I'm good.
Ed?
Yep.
So, are we ready to move forward? Are there any other issues that we need to discuss relative to this? Julie, Rod, you guys okay? All right. Given that, a lot of good discussion, I think, are we ready to entertain a motion?
Yeah, move to closed public hearing.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed?
Move to recommend approval of the city amendment, or codes, amendment, city code, chapter 12 relating to subdivision regulations based on the information included in staff report dated October 23, 2015.
Ann, second.
Again, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Okay, great. Next on the agenda would be moving to the planners' report. Julie, have a schedule update for us?
Mr. Chair members of the commission, our December meeting schedule is shifting a bit. I believe you all were emailed within the last couple of weeks or so. The regularly scheduled meeting for December 14th has been rescheduled to December 7th, so a week prior. And then the second meeting of the month, which I believe was scheduled for December 27th, 28th, something like that, whatever that Monday is, that meeting has been canceled as is customary because of that week between Christmas and New Year's.
Okay.
Those changes have been made on the city's website. If you get home and don't recall the dates, you can go look online as well.
So, the first Monday of the month instead of the second Monday of the month?
Correct.
Yeah, and then nothing at the end of the year.
Correct.
Very good. Is that all for the planners' report?
Yes, sir.
Members' report. Any, any update from any members? Continuing business? New business? If none, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
So, move.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.